Good after—oh, boy, I guess we are on, all right. Good afternoon and welcome to a city council meeting for Tuesday, May 30th. We will first of all start off with a roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. Counselor Campbell?
Present.
Counselor Carlson?
Also present.
Counselor Crowson?
I'm here too.
Counselor Dodick?
Present.
Counselor Palladino?
Present.
Counselor Schmidt Rempel?
Here.
Acting Mayor Parker?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Middleton Hope?
Present.
And Mayor Higgins.
Everyone's here, all right. So, start off with the acknowledgement statement. The City of Lethbridge acknowledges that we're gathered on the land of the Blackfoot people, but the Canadian Plains pays respect to the Blackfoot people, past, present, and future, while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, relationships, beliefs and relationships to the land. The City of Lethbridge is also home to the Mateen Nation of Alberta Region Three. And for recognitions, I'll start to my far left. Far left, Counselor Dodick. And, all right, Counselor Campbell?
I have nothing.
Right. Counselor Carlson? Counselor Schmidt Rempel?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to show that I had the honor of attending the Nikiyuko founding members' reception last week. At that was the Council General of Japan, as well as other distinguished guests. Nikiyuko is certainly a gem in our community as a good demonstration of a Canadian garden done in Japanese style. It was also great to hear some of the stories behind the garden's creation from Dr. Sagamoto, as well as how the garden can be maintained in the future while staying true to the original design. Thank you very much.
Right. To my far right, Deputy Mayor Middleton Hope.
Just a quick—couple of quick ones. Myself and other members of council and his worship, or lordship, had an opportunity to meet with the University of Lethbridge Student Union for the second time. Had a great conversation over a couple of hour period of time with them. Nice to see such nice young people so engaged. And lastly, another coffee with council. By the way, any groups that are out there that want to meet with council and have coffee, that's all it's going to cost you is just a cup of coffee. Several of us are more than happy to come out and have an engaged conversation, and most recently, we did so at the Alberta Lodge with a number of people my age.
Well then, all right. On that, Counselor Crowson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. I want to give a happy 100th birthday to the Lethbridge Coldail 4-H Beef Club, which is celebrating their anniversary and will be having their big event on June 10. As a fellow B4-H beef member, but I was from Vauxhall, not Coldail Lethbridge, I'm happy to be attending the event. Also want to do a shout out to everybody who convocated from the U of L on the weekend. As some of you know, at the last time we had council, I made mention of my beautiful new cup from the University of Calgary Grad Society and said I didn't have a U of L one. I have to now admit, we now have our U of L ones. The U of L was kind enough to send us a pen and a pen and a mug, so I have to give a shout out to the U of L. Thank you very much for this. And the other thing, some of you may know around the table certainly, that I'm a little bit exhausted today because I didn't get in till after midnight. I just returned from FCM, which is the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference. So just a thank you to the organizers, presenters, and everyone who attended that. I will be, of course, writing a full report on the conference, but it was a great conference, and Toronto, of course, is always beautiful to visit. Not to live in, to visit.
Thank you, Counselor Crowson. Counselor Palladino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I'm finding myself congratulating our fire and EMS services, this time for securing a top grade for their operational efficiency and receiving their certification from Accreditation Canada. So kudos to them, and Chief of Derry must be proud. Thank you.
Acting Mayor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank our tax assessment department, as well as Mr. Argucci and Mr. Matthews and City Manager. I think a while back, I sat down with you folks in regards to making a new way of informing our community regarding when tax notices come out and kind of giving them more knowledge of where their tax dollar goes, explaining why the increase and where that extra money is going to. And as I've, from what I've seen, it's been very well received, but I know it wasn't something that just happened overnight. It took quite a while to make sure it came to fruition, and I'm glad that we've had positive response, and I'm glad the community can have a better understanding of where every tax dollar goes and how it's spent. So, thank you very much to your departments.
Thank you. I don't have much to add from what's already been spoken, but I do want to—I have put a statement out here. I wanted to congratulate and thank all of those that let their name stand in this last provincial election. It's something that is not easy to do, putting your name out there and working hard on that forever from knocking doors to attending different forums, etc. So I just want to give a huge shout out to all of those that did let their name stand throughout the province, and congratulations to those that were successful also within our community. Emily Nudorf and Emily Phillips, and it sounds like we kind of woke up to Groundhog Day here, and that will continue forward. And we look forward as a council of advocating on behalf of the requests and the issues that we face within our community, and there's a lot of promises that were made, a lot of coupons that were given out prior to elections, so we need to make sure that we follow up on those promises as a council so that we could get the resources that we require within our community. Move on to the adoption of the agenda. I have a resolution from Acting Mayor Parker. Be resolved that the agenda of the regular meeting of city council on May 30th, 2023, be adopted as presented. City Clerk, are there any amendments?
No, Mayor Higgins, there are no amendments to today's agenda. Thank you.
Right.
Seeing that, I'd call the question, Mr. Mayor.
Question's been called, all in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you. And consent agenda from Deputy Mayor Middleton Hope. Be resolved that the minutes of the following meeting of city council be approved and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the same. City council meeting from May the 16th, 2023, and further be resolved that city council receive the information on the following reports: Status of Directed Resolutions for May 30th, 2023, and Procurement Summary Report from April 2023. And further be resolved that city council approve the recommendations contained within the following standing policy committee reports: 2023 Spring Hazard Report, be resolved that city council receive the 2023 Spring Hazard Report as information. 4.4.2 Opportunity Lethbridge 2022 Annual Report and Lethbridge Land 2023 to 2026 Work Plan, be resolved that city council adopt the Lethbridge Land 2023 to 2026 Work Plan as presented. 4.4.3 D-23 Outdoor Sports Court Capital Improvement Program Amendment, be resolved that city council amend the scope of the Capital Improvement Program D-23 Outdoor Sports Court as provided in Option One, and reduce the scope from two courts to constructing one court at a reduced size. 4.4.4 Housing Accelerator Fund Competitive Grant Application, be resolved that city council direct administration to apply for Housing Accelerator Fund. And Number Two, support the recommended housing supply growth rate commitment of 15% and the 11 Action Plan Initiatives presented on page 67 of the report to include in the City of Lethbridge Housing Accelerator Fund Grant Application. And Number Three, commit the allocation of $1.5 million from the funding held in reserve as matching funds for future projects from the 2022 to 2031 Capital Improvement Program adopted at the June 1st, 2021 Meeting of Council as a backstop to manage risk if the city is unable to meet the requirements of the action plan. And Number Four, direct administration to pause intakes for the Affordable and Social Housing Capital Grant and return to the Social and Cultural Standing Policy Committee before the end of Q4 2023 with strategic amendments to Policy CC49 Affordable and Social Housing Capital Grant Project Grant. And further be resolved that city council provide first reading to the following bylaws: Bylaw 6394, Amendment to Bylaw 3899 Railway Relocation Lands Area Redevelopment Plan; Bylaw 6395 Land Use Bylaw Amendment RE 802 2A Avenue North; Bylaw 6402 Land Use Bylaw Amendment RE 618 Sixth Avenue South; and Bylaw 6403 Land Use Bylaw Amendment RE 1730 10th Avenue South. And further be resolved that city council direct administration to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 27th, 2023, at 3:00 p.m. for the following bylaws: Bylaw 6402 Land Use Bylaw Regarding 618 Sixth Avenue South; and Bylaw 6403 Land Use Amendment RE 1730 10th Avenue South. And further be resolved that city council direct administration to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 11th, at 3:00 p.m. for the following bylaws: Bylaw 6394 Amendment to Bylaw 3899 Railway Relocation Lands Area Redevelopment Plan; and Bylaw 6395 Land Use Bylaw Amendment RE 802 2A Avenue North. And with that, I will turn over, all right, to Deputy Mayor Middleton Hope.
I'll have fatigue from that. Madam Clerk, I'd like to have 4.4.3 pulled, and I'm wondering if any of the other members of council require any other items to be removed from the agenda? Seeing none? Any questions, comments, concerns in regards to the consent agenda?
4.4.3, Madam City Clerk, will be moved to...
Section eight.
Section eight, 8.1. So 4.4.3 moved to section eight, 8.1.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, comments, or concerns, then I'll call the question.
Question's been called, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. I do have an official business motion from Acting Mayor Parker. Indoor Recreational Opportunities, 6.1. Whereas the Recreation and Culture Master Plan 2021 outlines a community's need for more multipurpose indoor recreational spaces, and whereas the Recreation and Culture Indoors Court Multipurpose Space Audits and Analysis 2022 Report identified that the emergence of pickleball has created additional demand for daytime gymnasium space, which is limited in Lethbridge, and whereas the State of Recreation and Culture Research Report 2021 concluded that gymnasium usage is at a full capacity during prime hours, and whereas the population of Lethbridge has surpassed 150,000 residents by 2050 Population Employment Forecasting Model, and whereas the north, south, and main pavilions at Exhibition Park will no longer be operational with the opening of the new building, and whereas the pavilions have been previously utilized for recreational activities and are owned by the City of Lethbridge, and whereas there will be a substantial cost for the buildings to be torn down. Therefore, be resolved that city council direct administration to explore the feasibility of repurposing the pavilions for recreational multipurpose opportunities and report back to city council by the end of Q4 2023. And further be resolved that city council provide up to $50,000 of funding for this feasibility study funded from recreation and culture operating funding. Now, turn it over to any questions, and I do see the screen lit up, so Deputy Mayor Middleton Hope to start.
Thank you, and this would be a request for a friendly amendment to the mover. Rather than simply identifying one indoor sport of pickleball, I'm wondering if you would be amenable to the emergence of indoor sport activities have created additional
Since I am the mover, and I was thinking the same thing, I'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. Thank you, Acting Mayor Parker, for bringing this forward. Question on the first actionable clause, and maybe this is through you, your worship, to the city manager or designate. It talks about exploring the feasibility of repurposing the pavilions, and I'm curious what all that would entail, because we had a former director of Infrastructure Services, an engineer who would always say, "Anything's feasible. Anything's possible. How many billions do you want to throw at it?" And so, is that part of this, is to say, "Yeah, it could be done, but it'll mean opening up this, and that's going to cost $10 million in abatement for hazardous materials," and then there's the... What is—the what does this feasibility mean to you, and what will we get out of this?
I think you partly answered your own question, Counselor. It sounded like a Doug Hawkins thing. And, yes, that's exactly it, is we would need to look at all of the building, the structure, the foundation, HVAC systems, and everything, the entire building envelope, to say, "Is it feasible? Would it save money to repurpose those? What would the costs be? Or would it actually be cheaper to knock them down and build from new?" And that's—the full spectrum from one end to the other.
So, thank you. So they would—this feasibility study will be fairly full spectrum, so...
Yeah, it—we won't get into the absolute minutia, but enough information to make a decision.
Thank you. Further, the next actionable clause talks about $50,000 to fund this, and it's coming from our operating budget in Wreck and Culture right now. A, is there enough funding in Wreck and Culture to accomplish this? And B, is this not something we could just sort of do internally?
Through the mayor to Counselor Carlson, so yes, there is adequate funding in the current Wreck and Culture budget to handle this $50,000 study. And the latter part of the question, I think, that's sort of its piece here, that yes, if this resolution passed, it really is internally, we would just do this using the existing budget, I guess is the way to say it. So the $50,000 within that budget, we would use.
Internally, so this isn't talking about going out and hiring a consultant? It's...
Sorry, no. My poor choice of words is my part. So this would be doing some—this feasibility study would be going out and doing work outside with other people.
And $50,000 is not an outrageous amount or a paltry amount for something like this?
For consulting work in feasibility studies, I think this is a reasonable amount for doing it, based on the information that the city manager mentioned. There's a bit of work involved in going through this for all the components.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carlson.
Yes, thank you.
I can't hear you.
I can't hear myself. I have a proposed amendment, and the mover can decide whether it's friendly or not. So, on the first operative clause, where it says, "Therefore be it resolved," I would add the words, "That subject to the Lethbridge and District Exhibition agreeing, comma, in writing, comma, to this motion," city council, and so on. And the reason for that is that we have a lease with the Lethbridge and District Exhibition for the exhibition, and to allow the city to do anything or any changes to that property requires their consent, so that's the purpose of this proposed amendment.
Would that be considered a friendly?
And I do accept that amendment.
All right. That is accepted, and do we have that up, if we can have that put—oh, it is. Subject to the Lethbridge and District Exhibition agreeing in writing to this motion that the city council direct administration to explore the feasibility of repurposing the pavilions for recreational multipurpose opportunities and report back to the city council by the end of Q4 2023. So that is two friendlies in there. I'm glad to see we're all friendly today. With that, I do have no further questions in, so to open debate, Deputy Mayor.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the comments from my colleagues as well, not only today, but leading up to today's decision. I'm glad we did table it two weeks ago so we could do a little more due diligence and research, and I think it's important that we did it. As most people know, and stated in the resolution, there is a huge demand for indoor recreational facilities, more than just pickleball, but everything from pickleball to volleyball to indoor soccer, and actually, I do believe those facilities were used for soccer back in the day, and other things. It could be tennis, it could be an indoor walking track, so I think there's a huge need. So that's the first point. Second of all, we all know that the exhibition is in needs of investing themselves of this facility for not only the operational cost, but an ongoing possible liability in regards to what it would take to keep it upgraded. I know for a fact—I shouldn't say for a fact, I'm just going to guess, but it would probably cost you 30 or 40, if not 60 million dollars to replace these facilities if you need to do it on a clean slate, on a whole new area. So if you already have the facilities there, and if the feasibility study shows that for a small investment, it would be worthwhile, I think it's a win-win-win for everyone. You know the old adage that you would kill two birds with one stone, I think you would kill three birds with one stone. First of all, you would fulfill the need in the community—three, what did I say? Three. I like birds, I like birds. Man, we live in a different world. The first objective we would accomplish would be, first of all, we fulfill the need in our community, and I'll use pickleball as an example. Pickleball is growing huge, not only in Lethbridge, but in North America, but I also know that there's other sports that are growing and that are in need, so we'll check that one off, check that box off. Two, we would take this liability or this ongoing concern away from the exhibition, and we've been told in the news reports that it's multimillion dollars to have these buildings removed, so they would no longer have that cost, which in turn probably be the cost of the taxpayers. Third, it would take pressure off our future CIP because a lot of those projects that are in the CIP that would need to be built over the next five to 10, 20 years, those will no longer be needed because we could use this facility. Besides, if it was to come to fruition, and I would think about the economic spinoff, I've also been reassured from the exhibition that the parking should be okay, but there are some issues that we'd have to take care of. And I did ask the board chair, and he told me I could say this publicly, that the exhibition is in support of handing this back over to the city and working with us to make this a future success, knowing that Wreck and Culture and their department would be running and operating this. So for this reason, I ask for council support. I know it's been very well received in the community. I know members of council have e-ed emails, phone calls, and there's quite a bit of excitement in regards if this was to be a success, but I do want to caution people that the feasibility study would have to first take place, and we'd have to know the exact numbers. For example, if it says it's $3 million to fix up and take it, get it all to code and get it to what it is, that's a lot cheaper than having to spend 40 or 50 million dollars in the future. So for those reasons alone, I would ask for council support in doing this, and so if you have any further questions or comments, please, thank you.
Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. Just a motion to divide the two actionable clauses. Thank you, Mayor Higgins. Just a motion to divide the two actionable clauses, if we can. Thank you.
Yep, just a request, so no motion needed. So, we've got dividing on the exploring the feasibility, and the second one, provide up to $50,000 of funding. All right? And that will be voted on separately. And so, we'll start off with...
What are the other debates?
Oh, well, there's no debate now, because it's now, we've got it divided. And so, we'll start off with debate on, or I guess I'll turn to the mover, or the one who put forward the motion to divide, to give some background to that before we...
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the only reason I asked for it to be divided is because I don't disagree that it's a worthwhile thought project. But perhaps I'm just cheap, and when I see the $50,000, I think we've got a lot of expertise in our administration right now, and maybe do it in baby steps. Maybe just direct administration to explore the possibilities and come back and say, yeah, it could be feasible, blah, blah, blah. Yep, let's spend $50,000 then to go down the pipe a little further. But I think we can get halfway there, just using the expertise we have here on staff to sort of understand if it is a good idea to even spend $50,000. I would just hate to throw away if administration could spend an hour or two and say, you know, once we open it up, there's going to be asbestos, there's going to be codes, there's going to be all the electrical. Then we have to do a contract to someone to operate it. Then we have to... So, I think we can do baby steps. And so, while I appreciate directing administration to explore the feasibility and come back with their high-level ideas, I'm not willing to spend $50,000 at this time to do what I think we can do, at least in baby steps.
Cheap, thrifty?
I am so cheap, sorry.
All right. And questions on the motion? And so, Councilor Dotick?
Yes, a question arising from Councilor Carlson's debate, and it's to administration. You'd answered the question as to what the administration thought the word feasibility meant in the context of this resolution. Do you have the capacity and wherewithal to be able to do that in-house versus getting an outsell expert to deal with it?
Short answer is no. One of the fundamental areas of expertise that we'd be looking to draw upon here, and please don't take that wrong, Councilor, I'm not debating it, is structural engineers. And we don't have that expertise in-house, so we would need to draw on external resources to look at some of this.
All right. Thank you. Acting Mayor Parker?
I'm in debate.
We are in... I see no further questions, so we can get into debate, sure.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I will be not supporting in regards... I would rather... I know everyone says here, position my model, be an expert at listening to the experts. And if the experts say we need an expert, someone who has the expertise, we have the $50,000 within the department to allocate towards this. So, this isn't something that's going to come out of the MRSR. This is why we have funds like this put aside. And so, I think $50,000 is, even though I don't want to spend the money all the time, but this is a $50,000 investment in our facilities and knowing more about our facilities. So, I will not be supporting... I will be supporting the 50, I will not be supporting the divide. I know you... Thanks for confusing us there, Councilor Carlson.
I too, just, this is just the debate on the split. So, this is what we're dealing with, right? Or, sorry, on the first part of the split, that's what I mean, on... Yeah, on the splitting it into the funding as well as to do the study, and then also the funding, those two different parts. I won't be supporting this. I will... I like the first resolution is, I do see that the wording in there of up to $50,000. Now, it is my hope that we could actually get this done for less, but in order to move forward with this project, I think that that's important. I do, however, really enjoy the change to make sure that we do speak with our partners or our operators out there, being the Lethbridge District Exhibition. So, with that, I will, but for this, I will not. And now, we're voting on just on A. All right? So... Question's been called on A. All in favor?
We just said A.
Part A.
I'm allocating the $50,000.
No, that's part two. This is the feasibility. So, an A, one more time. All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to B, the spending, the allocating of up to $50,000 for the study. So, questions and call, all in favor?
So, is that four against?
Opposed. All right. I won't do a roll call on that. All right. All right. With that, we'll move forward to 4.3, which was moved, and that was the Economic Standing Policy Committee regarding the Outdoor Sports Court Capital Improvement Program Amendment, and moved to Open Agenda 8.1. And so, we will open it up for any questions on that. And I think Deputy Mayor Middleton Hope, you wanted that removed. Is there something you wanted to start out with context to that?
So, we're going back to what is now 8.1?
That's correct.
Right. All right. So, I didn't have an opportunity to write out what I wanted to say, but I'll wing it. So, the reality is, is we have a project that has been tentatively approved in regards to establishing rinks for roller derby, I'll classify it as that, as well as outdoor hockey on roller skates. What I'm proposing is, is that we, now that we have made a motion that has indicated we would like to do a study of the pavilions, my thought is, is that the use of the pavilions might include these functions and include the capital that has been appropriated for that purpose. So, what I'm saying is, by deferring this, we now have an agreement that we are going to examine the pavilions. The pavilions may be used for, as a portion of this, may be used for this purpose in the future. So, what I would like to suggest to members of council, and obviously to the audience, is that this might be an appropriate use of both the facilities and the funding for a future use of those two items, rather than building new facilities.
And you didn't even have to jot that down. I think we've all got what you're...
Twice, twice.
...wanting to say. I do have a question from that for Mr. City Manager or his designate. We do have, this is a CIP project, and I'm just wondering how far along a pathway are we? Are we able to, if this has been out for tender, or are we able to do that? Be able to pause a project like this if we're already moving along on this outdoor sports court? So, if, I'm not sure who could answer that.
Mr. Richter can speak to these questions.
As of right now, we've hired a consultant to do the design, and we have not gone to a construction tender yet. So, we've already invested money into getting a design of this space, and that's as far as it's been.
Do you have any idea roughly what the cost of design would be? What is the throwaway dollars, I guess, is what I'm saying?
Yeah. So, the design's about $100,000. We spent $24,000 so far.
Right. Okay. Acting Mayor Parker?
Thank you, and this is a good follow-up, I think, to Mr. City Manager. The proposal that Deputy Mayor was speaking about, is it relevant to this, or is it something completely separate, different? Or is there validity to what was being said here in regards that we could use those pavilions for this?
The intent of this project was for outdoor space. So, agreed it is a court space that could be used indoors, but the intent was for more unstructured play and to add extra amenities at Legacy Park.
It was somewhat of a different idea and all that, and I'm seeing some heads nod there. So, thank you very much for that clarification.
Councilor Campbell?
I guess, kind of, I was sort of asking the same question. I mean, the concept, basically, you came up with a concept before CIP, and then the concept came, outdoor courts are a necessary, the feasibility study has sort of been done, and this is where it should go, in essence.
Or this type of facility, correct. Yeah, there's, we don't have any indoor courts that would support these types of functions, and that the intent of this project was to fill that need.
Thank you. All right, back to, if it questions, Deputy Mayor?
Yes, just a question to Mr. Richter. If we went ahead with the outdoor courts, how much usage in terms of months of use out of the year would we get from an outdoor court versus an indoor court?
To the mayor, to Councilor Middleton Hope, to the mayor, that's a good question. As this is the first court that we will be developing, it's hard to say those numbers. I think the anticipation is to have these courts running 12 months of the year. Obviously, with certain weather conditions, it wouldn't, play wouldn't be ideal. But we get a lot of warm weather in the winter, we open for road hockey. But for the organized activities, for the lacrosse, roller hockey, they would probably operate six months of the year.
Well, six months out of the year. And if we were to repurpose the pavilions with one of the areas in there for this purpose, how many months of the year do you anticipate that we would get use out of it?
Probably a full 12 months.
Councilor Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the mover, if I can. Deputy Mayor Middleton Hope, at the moment, the motion in front of us is to proceed as recommended. Do you have a... an amendment that you're proposing?
I do, I do have an amendment today. I was going to speak to, about delaying this decision. Is that the project? Okay, so this is, but now, if you can actually put in the wording there, I've just got, "he wants to delay the project."
Therefore, be it resolved.
He wants to delay the project, and the reason being is if we're not going to go ahead with this, and we're actually going to repurpose these facilities that currently exist, why would we spend additional funds in terms of the design as well as any development on a project that we suspect could be used in term...
But do you have an actual motion that you're putting forward?
To postpone or to delay the project. So, you want to actually delay the full project, although the dollars that are put in, I believe, was a hundred and...
Hundred thousand, but...
Hundred thousand?
Talking about 24,000 that's been used up to create a design. Is that correct, Mr. Richter?
So, be resolved that. How long, for how long? Are we wanting to bring this back in two months, three months? Do we have a timeline?
Well, we don't have a timeline in terms of how long it's going to take to get the evaluation of the pavilions done. So, I would say probably back to fourth quarter of the year.
So, do you want to put down base, something that ties it to the feasibility study that we're currently doing?
Yes.
So, put it to Q4 of this year?
Yes.
All right, postpone to the end of Q4 2023. Now, I have a question on that, Mr. Richter, maybe you can answer. This, right now, construction time, I'm sure this is, the summertime is when a lot of this work would be complete. Is that fair to say?
That's correct, yep.
It would delay an additional year.
Well, based on our current schedule, it's possible to construct this year, but not likely. So, the design is still happening. As the design gets finalized, and then we go to construction tender, we may or may not make this construction season as it is.
And seeing what you do here, you're going to even pause any further design until Q4 then? Is that fair to say? Because the dollars would be on pause? I don't know, maybe that's from Mr. City Manager. Is that fair to say this would pause?
Well, I'd be...
This project, because if we're going to Q4, any funding that has already been put out, that information should come back. But any further additional, it sounds like this would be paused.
So, we do have a contract in place for the design. So, I would have to talk to our procurement department, how that would roll out in pausing it or potentially canceling that design.
All right. Thank you. Acting Mayor Parker?
I'm in debate.
You're in debate. Do you have any more questions? Okay, I'll move to debate. Is there questions, Councilor Dotick? All right, debate. We'll start. Acting Mayor Parker?
Did you have an opportunity to speak to your debate, or did you just take questions? I just want to make sure I... Yeah, the motion.
Okay, so let's read off the motion here to make sure that we've got this right. It's not just, "he wants to delay project." So, "be resolved, the City Council amend the scope of the Capital Improvement Program D23 Outdoor Sports Court as provided in Option 1, and reduce the scope from two courts to constructing one court as reduced size." And then, and then that is gone now. It's, "be resolved, this project be delayed to the end of Q4 2023, and report back to City Council in conjunction with a feasibility study on repurposing the pavilions at the Lethbridge District Exhibition for recreational multip purposes." So, did you want to open debate on that, or have you already given an explanation?
I think I've given an adequate explanation.
And does this capture what you're...
I believe it does, and now let's open debate.
All right, debate. Councilor Parker?
Well, thank you very much, and I really, with full due respect, you know what happens when I say the word "full due respect," where it's going. And I'm glad that you did do it, because I had it pulled off, because it created the conversation. I think through the conversation, we got clarification. And what I heard is, this is something completely different. And in a perfect, I don't think in a perfect world, you want everything to be indoor. From what I've been told, this is something that's supposed to be an outdoor, and people like to be outdoor, and we're doing, this is something completely different than what we're doing at the exhibition. So, there is a need for this in the community. We are already going down the road. I don't want us to miss out on a full year of construction. We've already allocated from, it sounds like, $25,000 to a project that's going to be $100,000, with full design and everything and build out. So, for that reason alone, this is something that stands alone, and I want this to be, not accelerated, but done on course as scheduled. And I don't want to tie it with regards to the feasibility study, so I won't be supporting the table or deferring this.
Councilor Dotick?
I won't be supporting it either. It really is not really two different projects. This is one project that Economic SPC had approved, 8-0, to be referred to council. So, this project is a legacy park on the north side, a specific outdoor space, whereas the feasibility study, whatever it may be, it may turn out that those buildings are not useful for anything. So, for those reasons, and for the comments made by Councilor Parker, I won't be supporting this.
Councilor Dotick, or sorry, Councilor Schmidt-Rempel?
Thank you very much. I will not be supporting this motion either. I will be supporting the stakeholders. We've already consulted on these outdoor courts and their usage, because the intent of this project was to fulfill the need for outdoor courts. And since the stakeholders have already been consulted on the reduction of scope for this project, because we've already spent $24,000 on the design and that the contract is already in place, we've not yet started a feasibility study on the Exhibition Park buildings, and we don't know what the results of those studies will be. So, I will not be supporting this.
Thank you. I too will not be supporting this. I just, we already, due to cost, etc., we took two courts, and we already put two courts down to one, and not only that, but reduced the size. This is an outdoor court, which is exactly what the study had stated that we were needing, two courts. And so, again, going down to one, I think they're two different apples, oranges. So, unfortunately, I am unable to support this resolution. And with that, I'll turn the time back to Deputy Mayor Middleton Hope to close.
I can now monopolize. Yeah. So, the purpose of this was to take a look and see what might be the alternatives to spending $900,000 on two outdoor facilities or courts. It made sense to me theoretically to look at the prospect of putting them indoors, where they could be used on a 12-month-a-year basis, and take that $900,000 and put it into the repurposing of the facilities that we already have, without having to deal with weather and supply chain issues and delays and so forth. However, I certainly accede to the recommendations of my fellow council members, and I will conclude debate.
All right. With that, now this is for, just for the alternate motion, so...
Do I have to vote against this?
You can vote against it. All those in favor of delaying, or as per the alternate motion, show by raising your hands. Any opposed? All right, that is one to eight defeated. And I do have a resolution back on the table from Councilor Carlson, D23 Outdoor Sports Court. We will put that up there. I have read it already. This is what was presented first without the change, and so... first with without the change. And so, and I'll was in the consent agenda, if we can turn the time over to Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've had a lot of discussion around this, for all the reasons mentioned, the debate of of why we didn't support, or council did not support moving these indoors. They are two different projects. I we had a good discussion at Economic, so I would just ask for my colleagues' support. And unless there's other debate, I'll call for the vote.
All right. I see no debate. Question's been called. All in favor? And that's unanimous. All right. All right, I'm going to ask for a 10-minute break, and we'll return at 2:34. Counselor Carlson's watch will be running. So at 25:02, just a quick break, and we'll be back.
Sorry, Counselor Croson, that was far beyond.
Six minutes over.
Six minutes over, alright. Alright, I do have a resi— oh, if he is here, actually, we're going to... We're gonna move and do 10.2 first, if we could, and that is request for heritage approval to demolish Manny Opera Society 318 Second Avenue South from Counselor Schmidt Rempel. Be resolved the City Council direct administration to issue a heritage intervention approval for the demolition and backfilling of the Manny Opera Society Building 318 Second Avenue South. So we'll open it up for any questions. I know I do have some questions, and I know I do see the chief here and one of his colleagues, and if I could, through the city manager, I have a couple of questions regarding the demolition of this building. Not sure who— Mr. City Manager, is the chief or his designate?
Well, it might depend on the question, Mr. Mayor. So we have Mr. Palmer and the chief here, and they'll figure out who needs to answer.
Perfect. So my question is, is—it's important to keep heritage within our community in these buildings. Now, hearing that some of the reports coming back of safety, why is it that we have to take this building down? What is the reason? I know that there's been a recommendation from those that are higher up within the province that—to have this removed. Could you please speak to that?
Good afternoon. Unfortunately, I don't know the details on why the province is asking or making those comments, but certainly from a safety perspective, there's certainly a number of reasons why this building is a risk building to our, I guess, individuals, our individuals in the community homeless that break into it, because we do see that in a number of buildings, and we have in the past, where these buildings that are vacant, some of our homeless individuals break in there, and then they—they're doing whatever they do, and an emergency event occurs, whether that's a structure fire, which then puts our men and women from Lethbridge Fire and Emergency Services at grave rest, going into these unsound buildings and having to rescue these individuals.
Currently, it's already structurally unsound, and that's why we're moving—it's not that you would worry about what happens if someone was to break in and try to seek refuge, I guess, from whatever is out in—you know, out on the streets. That is an issue, but more so is the safety issue with what has happened with adjoining buildings. Is that fair to say?
That is correct, yes. With it being unsound for our individuals or anybody around that building, that is a significant risk for anybody who gets in there or in that general vicinity of that building.
Right. And Mr. Sanchez?
Just want to make another comment, too. I believe the main requirement to demolish the building is coming from the owner of the building, and it's based on the structural engineer report that has been attached. Looking at the structural engineer report, the recommendation is due to the critical, to poor, to marginal condition of the building, having an open excavation to the west will place a risk of the building collapsing. So the recommendation from the structural engineer is to demolish the structure.
Alright. Thank you. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Your Worship. But I don't know who can address this, but there's talking about if there's even a remote chance that things can be salvaged within this building. What does that remote chance look like? What kind of cost is that going to be? Who burdens— who takes on the cost? And what is—can someone kind of take me through that? I mean, that's a real tough—I know it's not easy, but if someone could.
I saw us all looking at each other. I—I—I see Ross putting up his hand, so maybe Mr. Kilgore can speak to that.
Through the chair, thank you for the question, Counselor. So the structural engineer points out that, you know, the poor condition of the building currently, and that it is possible to bring it back into compliance and to being safe and able to be used again. However, they point out that the resources available to the current owner mean that that's just not feasible. So the HPAK's advice to council then was that because there still is a chance that it could in theory be saved, that they feel it shouldn't be demolished. However, administration's position is that because those resources are not there, and based on the safety concerns, that we would recommend it be approved.
So if we turn down the proposal to have it demolished, what happens next? What's the next step? Because the owner clearly hasn't—doesn't have the resources to get it done. Does it just sit there and—sit there?
Yes, essentially, it would be up to them what to do next, but our building inspections team have advised them that they should have a structural engineer monitor the building and advise the city if there's any concern of imminent danger of collapse. At that point, if there was an imminent danger, then building inspections could step in and order that it be demolished.
And does each day as it goes by, is this a cost to the owner moving forward? Or is it just, again, just sits there?
I'm not sure on their arrangements.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Your Worship. Sanchez?
Just want to spend a little bit more on that answer again. Going back and after reading the structural engineer report, there is a significant risk here. So that's why we're coming forward with this option to demolish the building, to avoid any liability and even safety risk for staff and other people that will be around it. Having an open excavation by this building can actually, in fact, bring a risk level that we are not recommending to go forward. So that's why we're here today.
Right. Deputy Mayor, Leno?
So I'd just like some clarification on who assumes the risk of this liability. Is it the property owner? Is it the city? Who is it that actually assumes this risk if we leave the building intact?
Mr. Ross is coming to answer that one.
Through the chair, thank you, Counselor. So the risk is the owners. It's their building, and it's their property and responsibility to make it safe.
Are we impacting—that risk by saying we want that building to stay in place? Are we making them assume that a greater liability?
Perhaps I would defer to Mr. Lowen on that question.
Just—the question is, are we increasing the risk on the owner if we don't agree to their request to demolish it? Well, to the extent that the risk exists, and we're extending the amount of time that it would exist for, that would be more risk, yeah.
And then do we assume some of that risk because we have placed an additional burden of risk on the owner?
I can see the logic in that connection, but I'm unaware of any case law that would support it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. Counselor Schmidt Rempel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So through you to the city manager or designate, sort of tying back to costs, who would be responsible for monitoring the structural integrity of the building, the cost of that? Would that be the building owner, then?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay. And in addition to that, who would be responsibility for the cost of demolition? Would that also be the building owner?
Correct.
And they would also then assume the liability issues, and the city would assume the cost of all that if anything happened?
They would assume liability issues? That's the second part of your question.
Would—if we voted not to approve the demolition of this, would we also be responsible for those liability issues?
So that goes to Mr. Lowen's comment of him not being aware of any case law. It's an interesting piece, but I would look to Mr. Lowen to expand on anything further there.
The argument that would be made is that somehow our decision goes to—the would go to the causation of the risk, and I would think that the city would have significant issues with that characterization. Because the risk exists because the building is the way it is. I can see the logic of it. Somebody might try to sue us. As you all know, we can't stop somebody from suing us. Whether that claim would be successful is where I—I'm not prepared today to do—to give you a detailed answer, definitive answer. If it's important to deliberations and we have time, I'd certainly go away and do some research on that.
Thank you very much for that. And then, final question. City manager or designate, is there a timeline for the removal of this building? So if we voted to have this removed, what kind of timeline would we be looking at? And would there be opportunity for the owner of the building to look at selling it to someone else who could take on the responsibility of the building? Or someone else to assume that responsibility of the building? What kind of timeline would we have there? Or would somebody who'd be interested in purchasing that have to step up to do that?
Well, I will take a stop on that one. I will say, there is not a formal timeframe or timeline that we have to follow. The only—the only thing to consider, going back to Mr. Lowen's comment, is the longer the building remains in its current state, the risk exists. And if something happens, then that can cause a problem. Knowing—going to your other question in regards of a possibility of a third party buying the building—again, I cannot comment about a third party with that interest, but building being compromised and with a structural engineer's report like this one here will be really hard to sell unless it's bring up to code and requirements, or they will take care of the demolition and all the work attached to it. It will also be a matter of assuming that risk, that the building stands as it is until they find a final option for it.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Dodek?
Yes. This question is to Mr. Lowen, and I'm gonna suggest to you that if the city, in fact, does not allow the owner to deal with their property as they would like to, that in fact the city would be liable for anything that occurred after today's date. And I would suggest that that's because there's a bylaw that deals with the Manny Opera Society Building that puts—that holds the city harmless, and the owner has to accept total liability in relation to that building. But in this case, the owner does not have the ability to reduce their liability if the city, in fact, does not give permission today to allow her to do with the property as they would like to do. Under that scenario, would you not agree with me that the city runs a real risk of liability being found against them if that resolution, as presented, isn't passed today?
Bylaw that you referenced is still in effect, and the bylaw prevents owner—it is a restriction on the owner's property rights. I see the logic for the claim against the city, and I can't discount it. But I do also know that policy decisions, to the extent that our decision today here might be a policy decision, are also insulated from that kind of liability. So I—I'm not prepared to say beyond—or categorically—that what the outcome of such a lawsuit would be, but there is real risk.
And particularly, there is real risk because we're aware of it, because we're actually talking about it today. So the minutes of this meeting, should anything happen, if this is now passed today, would likely become evidence in a court of law. Fair enough?
Fair.
Thank you.
Right. On that, Counselor Palladino?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would not the owner have known there was a caveat on the title stating that it's a historic building?
Through the chair, thank you, Counselor. The owner did know that this was a designated building, this one and the Boan Tong next door that they also own. So we did meet with them a number of times after they initially bought the property and chatted to them about the designation and their plans and the kind of heritage approvals they might need and so on.
So they would have known at time of purchase it would have showed up in their legal transaction. But I think we're kind of—well, I'll debate this later, but—okay, that's all I have for now.
I see no further questions, and so I'll turn it over to open debate. Counselor Schmidt Rempel?
Thank you. Thank you very much. This is not an easy one to come in front of council. Certainly, we've lost the Boan Tong Building downtown, and now we're looking at this one, and it's very difficult to consider removing one of our heritage resources. On January 31st, 23, a fire at the Boan Tong resulted in severe damage to that building and necessitated its demolition. On April 19th, 2023, the owner of the Boan Tong parcel and Manny Opera Society Building contacted the city with a structural engineer's report that detailed the damage to the Manny Opera Society Building as a result of the Boan Tong fire, through both fire and water damage. As a result of the damage to the Manny Opera Society Building and the owner's lack of financial resources to stabilize the building, the structural engineer recommended demolishing the building. The owner requested a heritage intervention approval for the demolition of the Manny Opera Society Building and backfilling the site. At this point and today, council is asked to determine whether or not an intervention approval should be issued for the Manny Opera Society's demolition and backfilling. Now, keeping in mind, this building is also a provincial historic resource. Approval was also required from the province, and that was granted by the province on April 27th, 2023. However, at their meeting on April 28th, 2023, the Historical Places Advisory Committee passed a resolution stating they are not prepared to recommend that the city council direct administration to issue an intervention approval for demolition at this time. So those are our experts that do advise council on historic places within the community. Finally, this is in front of us because of the safety concerns raised by the structural engineer's report, financial constraints of the property owner, and to remain in alignment with the province's decision to approve demolition and backfilling, planning and design recommends that city council direct administration to issue the intervention approval.
Do you have those in debate? Counselor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgins. I appreciate the owner's financial concerns, and I have sympathy for the owner. This owner, who knew that they were purchasing designated buildings, they take on these historic buildings on behalf of the community. They need support, and they're not getting it. For one thing, and I've got an idea for a motion to go forward to Alberney municipalities again, the province needs to increase the amount of money in the pot for historic buildings because the grants are not suitable for what we're trying to save out there anymore. But when I look at this building in particular, I have to think back to about a decade ago. About a decade ago, I sat in a meeting with city engineers and city staff—I was there as a volunteer from the historical society—and somebody actually said, "There are even people crazy enough to try to save the Oliver Building." And I'm sitting there going, okay, I'm the crazy person in the room. But we were—we were fighting to save the Oliver Building, which was condemned, which had a structural engineering report that knocked the building down. It's not worth saving. Well, luckily, it was saved. It was lost by tax default. The council at the time took the building, and then, of course, as we know, it was sold, and Hunter Hagie was able to maintain that building and fix it. I am not saying that this building can have that same ending, but it's possible. This building could be saved, and I know there are members of the Chinese community here today, and it's one of the things that they are asking for is some time. They want to look at options, and one of the things they definitely want to do is sit and talk to our administration. Can the facade be saved? Can there be something of that building saved, if not the entire building, that can help to tell the story of Chinatown? Because, as was mentioned, we lost the Chinese National League Building around 19—oh, 19, sorry, my head's always in history—around 2012 with the windstorm. We've lost the Boan Tong Building now. This building, the Winghua Chang Building, Kwangnam Lung Building, Manny Opera Society Building, whichever name you want to call it by, is a 1907 building. During 1907, when the residents of this community led a riot against the Chinese residents on Christmas Day, 1907, that's the year this building was constructed. In the middle of discrimination, in the middle of prejudice, in the middle of being treated horribly by this community, they got together and built this building. And here, 116 years later, we have the chance to at least attempt to save it. And I hope my colleagues will be looking back at what was done with the Oliver Building, provide the time. We may lose this building in the end, but provide the time for the community to have a conversation. They—this came up quickly on the agenda. Of course, the owner has had time to think about this, but other members of the community haven't, and to see if there are some options. Once this building is gone—if this building is gone, there's no take backs. We don't have a second chance at this. We have to do it right now, and I hope my colleagues will at least postpone this for a while, and so those conversations can be had. Thank you.
I—I'm going to entertain a question on that—that came up from that, and I'm gonna entertain it myself. This delay—and thank you very much, Counselor Croson, for that. Any way we can say this is great, however, my question is, now to admit, and I'm not sure who can, if it's infrastructure, but through Mr. City Manager, we delay this. As what I've heard Counselor Dodek mention, that once this has come to a council meeting, this is out in the open, we delayed. If something happens in that time, it sounds like there's some liability that we could be dealing with. Delaying the time and actually finding out what we can do if it's with the facade or something, I'm in favor of something like that. I'm just looking at what that liability could be if we delay this, say, a month. And I'm not sure, Counselor Croson, what it is—if it's a month, or if it's two weeks, or whatever that looks like. Can someone help me wrap my head around this? Because I would like to give that opportunity, that time, for them to talk with administration, but I'm concerned on a liability as well.
Mr. Mayor, my answer may not be overly satisfying, is because—and I look at Mr. Lowen as well—is, yeah, with time and the liability that exists, it all depends on what happens. And that's—without the crystal ball to predict what that may or may not be, it's really difficult. So, Mr. Lowen, I don't know if you have anything further to add to that?
Just an example, you know, none of us know what will happen, and that means more than one thing. We were talking about the liability of the owner, and if council made a decision today to not allow the owner to demolish the building today, that owner would be faced with the decision whether they were gonna take extra steps in terms of monitoring or bracing to preserve those things. We don't know what will happen, so any discussion of liability, I think what my recommendation would be, bear in mind that there's a real risk, not just a theoretical risk, a real risk, a real risk of somebody even being harmed. risk, a real risk of somebody even being harmed. But it's, there's not a certainty. We don't know what that will play out with at the end of time.
I've heard of this, I do have a couple of, I'm sure, questions that are coming from this, but if council let me entertain a question from the Chinese community, I do have a question, if somebody at representation can come up, I just, if you can come to the mic, please, and just state your name for the record. My question is, have you been in conversation with the current owner on this to find if there's something that can be done, or, I'm just wondering where we are with that?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Yin Zheng, and I'm here on behalf of my community members. We are the Southsung Opera Chinese Association, Chinese Culture Society, and the Homun Athletic Club, and many others together. I was just hurt about this news yesterday, so we are very shocked. That means we didn't have any chance to talk to anybody, not to mention the owner of the building. So we really, what we want today is for the council to give us some time to gather the community and gather our thoughts on how to proceed, and what are the concrete options we want from the city, because we are losing Chinatown, it's, sorry, I'm sorry. One thing I want to say, though, on the optimistic side, is that I've been at Lethbridge for 23 years, I've taught at the University of Lethbridge for 20 years, and this is my first time in a city council meeting, and it's really an eye-opener. And instantly, tomorrow morning, I'll be having a phone interview with Calgary Eye Opener. And then I'm going to tell them that I have seen a very forward-looking, an optimistic, and friendly council in front of me, and all we wish is to have a chance to talk, to have some real conversation with you guys, and with the owner, and with our community, and hopefully we'll come up with some constructive ideas. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And so before I entertain the questions here, can I put, actually, I can put it for debate, but I want to add something to this, to this resolution, to delay this for two weeks. Madam City Clerk, do I do that now? And have that conversation go from my amendment first?
Yeah, or my question deals with that.
Okay, so then you can ask a question from that?
No, I'd like to ask the question first, because it may affect.
Okay, I'll go to questions. Councilor Dodik, you've already spoken, did I just not take you out of the queue? Because it's yourself and then Deputy Mayor.
I'm in debate.
Okay, you're in debate, okay.
In support of this resolution.
So, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. So, I accept the risk. I understand that there is a risk involved here, that the city has a degree of exposure, the building owner has a degree of exposure, and I recognize that the community is certainly wanting to be able to at least have some time to be able to evaluate this. My question, then, is, to those who may have an answer, how long will it take us to demolish this building? Does that not provide time to the group to be able to provide for, if nothing else, at least a respectful demolition of the building? By that, I mean the opportunity to remove a facade or any other portions that they may feel that they're capable of doing. So my question, then, very clearly to administration, is, how long will it take us to get an order to demolish and to actually demolish this building? Are we talking days? Are we talking months?
Counselor, that's a good question. So to that point, and it's not a simple answer, so again, securing a contractor that could do it, but if you were doing just a standard demolition where you're not looking to preserve anything, if there was a contractor available, you know, based on the size of the building, that's probably would take a week, I don't know how long the contractor might be. The contractor might say, "I'm a month away from being able to get there," or they might say, "I could be there next week, and I could have it done within a week." If you're looking to preserve aspects of the building, naturally, that would take more time because it's a more delicate process to preserve the facade and other pieces that are mentioned.
So then subsequently, we would have to put that out to our RFP?
Again, this is the responsibility of the owner, so they don't have to go by the city's rules. They could say, "X, Y, Z Company, can you do this?" And they say, "Yeah, we'll be there tomorrow."
Fair enough. And then regardless of the length of time, whatever liability, whatever risk the city has, would be there anyway. So if we make a decision today to demolish this building, we're still, there's a degree of exposure until such time as that building is actually demolished. No, there's no...
I would suggest it is slightly different, and I can see Councilor Dodik out of the corner of my eye, is that if we make a decision to postpone, hold, evaluate, we actually accept some responsibility, whereas if we make a decision to demolish, proceed, that responsibility remains wholly with the owner.
Okay, thank you, Your Worship.
May I just quickly chime in? What about the responsibility for losing our history?
I know, we'll go through that story, it's, if we ask a question...
Can we go back to the seat, or should I stand?
Yeah, no, it's best to go back, yeah, we heard from you, thank you very much for answering that question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I understand the process, and we all understand the process, so thank you for those comments. Councilor Palladino, is this, are you in for debate? Or are you in for a question that's come? I really started something, didn't I? All right, go ahead, Councilor Palladino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now I'm getting confused, because we are being asked to intervene on something that we don't have to do. So if we get sued, we're going to get sued for not issuing an intervention, which doesn't make sense to me. We're not being asked to demolish the building, we're not being asked to save the building, we're being asked to release something off the title. And for all the reasons Councilor Carlson said, I think we need to put a stop to that. I won't be supporting, I won't be supporting an intervention.
All right. So, is that a question? I guess you're in debate. You're done, all right. So, my apologies, we'll open up to debate, and I think, Councilor Carlson, you're done, okay, so move over to Councilor Dodik.
I know there's a tendency of people to want to accede to the wishes of people in the audience and council chambers, but I think it's important to note that the only person bearing financial burden at this point in time is the owner of this building. The Lethbridge Historical Society, they can make recommendations, but they didn't come to the table saying, "We're prepared to offer some money to help out the owner in terms of stabilizing this building," nor has anyone else. Now, this is not the Oliver Building, that's an apples-to-oranges comparison. This owner purchased the Boan Tong Company, and a trespasser came into that property, and through no fault of the owner, it was set on fire, completely demolishing the building. And in the course of fighting the fire, there was water damage because of escaping into the building they carry on their business premises, which are directly to the west. Unfortunately, the Boan Tong Company was also important to support the structure beside it, being the Marni Opera House. So the owner now is in a position where they can't do anything with the property at this point in time unless this council gives them permission to tear it down pursuant to the provisions of the bylaw and the historical regulations and acts that are in place. So I emphasize, this is an innocent owner. And we have heard from the fire chief, we've heard from various administration, that there's significant risk, there's safety concerns, and all those issues, and the city council report goes into great detail on that. So, the liability to the city is great, in my opinion, if today we don't give the innocent owner the opportunity to do with her property as a normal property owner would be able to do. In short, we're telling that owner, yes, it's your property, yes, the province says you can take it down, the safety folks says that this is unsafe and is a risk to people who might trespass, as well as to passersby, and we're even considering postponing this for a period of time, and to what end? So, I would ask the council seriously enforce, or at least give the owner the opportunity to do with their property what they wish. And the fact that they bought it as a historical building, I'm pretty sure they assumed that they were going to have two historical buildings that they were going to renovate, because that was the intention. They certainly didn't have it in their mind that, oh dear, if a trespasser comes in, burns down the Boan Tong Company and makes it structurally unsafe for the structure beside it, I'm sure they wouldn't have bought the building had they known that. Remember, this is an innocent owner, let him do what they would like to do with the property, and take the risk away from the city, because that risk exists starting today if this is not approved. Thank you.
I see no one further in debate, but I will add, I do have an amendment that, right after approval, so heritage intervention approval effective June 13th, 2023, for the demolition and backfilling of the Manny Opera Society Building, 318 Second Avenue South, to give that two weeks, and I know this is, I'm not a betting man, I'm not a betting man, I'll tell you what, it's, I'm concerned somewhat with that, but I do see if there's two weeks of opportunity to have conversations, I think, gosh, and I can't believe I'm doing this, but I just, I believe that's the right thing to do, and so I've got that change in there, effective June 13th. I'm asking for if, so, Councilor Schmidt-Rempel? It's a friendly, and that's considered a friendly? So, Mr. Sanchez, did you have something to say, sorry?
Just a quick question, so this is two weeks, effective that, those two weeks...
Not coming back to council?
Not coming back to council. If they find any work or resolution or anything that they can do...
With the owner?
As the owner directly.
We've, our part, and thank you, Councilor Palladino, for bringing this up, ours is to just release it from that heritage, that designation. And so, and that's why I've asked already why this was here, that being the reason, so now it's with the owner, and I think the group has heard that there's some time to speak and find out what you can do in that time. So, yeah, that's, and it is considered a friendly. So, I don't even think I have to even further comment on that, and I should probably vacate the seat.
It's a friendly.
It's a friendly, you've got it as a friendly, all right. So, I see no questions or debate? Did you want to open debate again, or you've kind of already opened it? Do you want to close it? I don't know where we are now.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for the friendly amendment on this. Mayor Higgins, it was along the lines that I was thinking as well, particularly given that I had been contacted by some members of the Chinese community, that they only just found out about this today, and we do need to give them the opportunity to speak to the owner to find a solution, a solution with the owner on this. So recognizing that the risk does start today, if we do not approve this, as Councilor Dodik said, I would ask council's support to have this with the friendly amendment of the heritage intervention approval being effective on June 13th. This does not prevent the owner from moving forward with fencing the site, preparing it for demolition, doing what they need to do, having the engineering done in order to have the building removed, taking a look at any asbestos remediation. It does not prevent them from doing that, but it does give our Chinese community an opportunity to speak with the building owner, to see if there is anything further that can be done. So with this, I would ask for council's support on this motion as amended.
I see no further debates, so questions been called, all in favor? We must do that by way of roll call?
Thank you. Councilor Carlson?
Sorry, we're doing the roll call. In favor?
Councilor Carlson?
Opposed.
Councilor Dodik?
In favor.
Councilor Palladino?
Opposed.
Councilor Schmidt-Rempel?
In favor.
Acting Mayor Parker?
Opposed.
Deputy Mayor Middleton-Hope?
In favor.
Mayor Higgins?
In favor.
Councilor Campbell?
In favor.
Six to three, that carries.
We are back to 9.1 from Deputy Mayor Middleton-Hope, encampment strategy update, verbal. Be it resolved, the city council received a verbal encampment strategy update as information. Is there anything that is...
Presentation.
Was Andrew online? Because I'm looking out there going, "Who is it?" She's going to speak to, thank you. I'm like, "I did not receive anything, what are we..." Thank you, turn that to Ms. Kleisinger.
Thank you, Mr. Malcolm wasn't able to be here today, so he has given me the inaugural first update to do on his behalf. I'll try to do him proud. Just, this will only take a few minutes, and then if you have a couple of questions, hopefully I can answer those for you, but just wanted to give you a quick update of what has happened since the encampment strategy was approved at the council level. Since then, two encampment positions and one housing position have been posted and closed, and the interview process is currently underway. We have sent an invitational RFP for outreach services, which closed on May 23rd, and administration is currently evaluating and negotiating on those contracts. Those were sent to five relevant service providers. 311, the PSCC, and the Safe Community Call Center are all working together now to streamline and update reporting processes, including a new web form option for reporting encampments. Oh, sorry, and on the outreach, we do expect to be in a position to deliver this strategy as approved on Monday, June 19th, staff position 311 and outreach services. So that's kind of the inside city hall stuff that's been happening in terms of cleanups to date. The encampment response team coordinated three successful Tier 3 responses on May 17th, 19th, and 25th, targeting several locations, including but not limited to Second Avenue Norths, Stafford CPR Overpass, Galt Gardens, St. Pat Cemetery, and the River Valley. The largest site was cleared on the east bank of the Old Man River between Whoop Up Drive and the Boat Launch. Forty-five bags of material was removed, and seven large structures were removed. What we are seeing is strong compliance, outreach has been provided, there are still some concerns of fires in the River Valley with some of these encampments, there is evidence of some criminality with the ones that we've been to so far, and large amounts of biohazards. To the to-date, there's been no financial expenditures, other than staff time and stuff that we already have available to us. The upcoming updates that we have for council will be a written update on June 2nd and a verbal update on June 13th, and then we will, as per the plan, have a media availability on June 15th. So I can answer any questions if you have them.
Awesome, well, thank you, thank you very much, Ms. Kleisinger. I, kudos to you and your staff, like, this is, I'm seeing it very different, and I guess my question would be, this approach that we've got this year, are you noticing it different from previous years in what we're doing and how we're addressing this?
100%. What I would say, one of the major differences is a very collaborative and partnered approach with LPS, which is working extremely well, and in addition, we don't feel like we've been caught flat-footed as in last summer. So we are far more prepared earlier in the season, and we have a more, yeah, definitely a more collaborative approach.
And my last question, or my, for this, and I'll hop out, is the approach, you're talking about the collaborative approach, and with taking these encampments down in a quick manner, and obviously getting the additional social services that are required and pointing people in the right direction, are you finding that the compliance is because they're coming down so quickly?
They're definitely not able to become entrenched, which was one of the biggest problems that we had last year. Once they've settled in an area, it was a lot more difficult. But I think the other thing is, is that as with anything, that when you see people are becoming aware that we're coming to take down encampments, and so as that word travels, I think they're less likely to settle in one specific area.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Middleton-Hope?
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Kleisinger, for the update. I'm wondering, in terms of...
I'm wondering, in terms of data collection and mining, will that information be made available at these impromptu discourses with council in the future?
Yes. By the time June 19th-ish rolls around, we should be fully operational, and that'll include those two positions we'll have hired. And one of the internal positions is very specifically data. And so we don't have anything currently because we're not fully operational. This is just something that we've been working on off, off the side of our desk, but 100%.
Yeah, so that'll be the analysis component. Are we collecting the data currently? So how much, the poundage of the biohazardous debris, criminal charges, criminal offenses? Are we collecting that kind of information currently?
We are collecting it, but we will be working with our current 311 CRM, so it'll be easier for us to pull the data. Currently, it's sitting in a, in a spot where it's harder for us to collect.
Okay. And you'll have the analysis then prepared for June 19th? Or is it 13th?
You'll get a written, yeah, June 13th and June 2nd, so you'll get alternating weeks of verbal and written updates.
Good, thank you.
Councilor Campbell?
You probably can't answer this question, but just if you can. Yeah. No. Is, is there, are people, are you finding that the people that are in the encampments are the same people, and then they just move to another part? Or do you see a difference in numbers compared to last year? Are we getting, people are more aware that it's, it's more difficult to do encampments here and moving elsewhere? Or is there any trend in that way that you can tell?
I would say that there's probably a little of column A and column B. There are people that are known that move and set up in a different location, some known even by name. And then there's other that are probably in encampments for a different reason and wish to remain unseen, so that's where some of the encampments you would see in the River Valley, that they're probably looking to set up for an extended period of time and hope that nobody sees them. So I think that we've got, we've got both columns. I would say in the River Valley, the more problematic is the fire risk. And so that's where, when you look at that tiered system, they might fall differently in the tiers, because even if they're trying to remain unseen, if at any time they have a propane tank or are starting fires, then they kind of move along in that tier.
What I'm happy to hear, that there is a fair bit of compliance with, with all of the encampments, and people moving along, and they'll, there, there's no, I, I know we had real issues here at the Civic Center, for example, last year.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Good to hear. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
All right, no further questions, so I'll turn it over to debate. Open debate. Councilor Middleton-Hope?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Ms. Kleisinger, for the report. It was informative. And I now open it up for debate. That's my opening.
All right. Open debate? Well, debate is open. I would like to offer my support, and congratulations to the, to the team, Ms. Kleisinger. I've, by now, this time last year, the calls I would have received already are, are much different than what they were last year, and so I want to thank you and your team for the work that's been done, because this collaborative approach is what makes all the difference. And I want to make sure that we follow up on these promises that are made, as far as additional resources from the provincial government, now that we do know who is, who we're going to address, to be able to still help our police service and, and the other services that we need, not just policing, but if there's any support services from a social side that we need. So please reach out to your team and thank them for the work they've done, because I'm tickled pink on that, so thank you. And I see no further debate, so in closing.
Tickled pink?
Tickle blue, tickle pink.
Thank you. We have a motion before us? It's been read?
It has been.
Then I will call the question. All in favor?
Questions?
There you go. Come on.
Any opposed? Okay. It's unanimous. All right. All right. Okay, we'll go to council updates, and I believe Councilor Carlson, you have an update?
Yes, my update is in the agenda. I attended a meeting for councils related to QDA for transit. One of the fascinating things about the conversation was, even though it was a transit meeting, the entire conversation was about, well, most of the conversation was about housing. As everybody has seen, QDA has brought out some strategies and some advocacy work around housing relating it to transit. And the whole idea is they're trying to upscale transit on planning issues and upscale planning on transit issues, so the two can work better together, so that housing and transit can be done effectively for communities. So I think I may have accidentally got myself on this committee, because they told me the next meeting's in November. I thought it was just a one-time meeting, but I, I may be now on the committee. I'll have to figure that out for sure.
Yes, that is correct. You, once you get on, you can't get off. That was six years of my life, so. Councilor Carlson?
That was actually going to be my question, your worship, was, was are we a permanent member of this committee? We used to have representative on one of the small systems boards.
We are members of QDA, it's just that we removed the council members, I was when we reduced these boards, so Councilor Carlson has attended. I did actually a couple of months ago to a TVMC meeting as well, myself, so, yeah. But it's, it's, we are members, our transit, and I believe we still are, Mr. City Manager. Obviously, we're getting, they're reaching out to Councilor Carlson, so.
Excellent. I just, I, I think it's a good committee to keep in touch with. I was the rep before Mayor Higgins was, and if we're passing the baton on to Councilor Carlson, I, I'll, I'll vote for that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for that update, Councilor Carlson. So we'll need a motion to go in closed. Thank you, Councilor Carlson. All in favor? All right. Let's take a couple of minutes. A couple of minutes to go. Out of closed. All right. I do have a resolution from closed meeting from Counselor Dotick, 14.1, Lefflerton District Exhibition Project Update. Verbal, be resolved that City Council Direct Administration proceed with the confidential direction provided in closed session. And further be resolved that City Council postpone this matter to the June 27, 2023 closed meeting of council. And further be resolved that City Council direct that the closed meeting discussions with respect to the Lefflerton District Exhibition Update, verbal. Remain confidential pursuant to Section 16, harmful to business interests of a third party. 21, harmful to intergovernmental relations. 23, local public body conferences. 24, advice from officials. And 25, harmful to economic and other interests of a public body of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Counselor Dotick?
Self-explanatory.
Question's been called. All in favor? Opposed? That carries. Thank you. And last one, actually, another one from Counselor Palladino, Intergovernmental Matter, 14.2, verbal. Be resolved that City Council direct the closed meeting discussion with respect to intergovernmental matter, verbal. Remain confidential pursuant to Section 21, harmful to intergovernmental relations. And 24, advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Counselor Palladino?
Call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor?
It wasn't self-explanatory.
Self-explanatory. And from Counselor Crowson, closed meeting advice from officials, 14.3, be resolved that City Council direct the closed meeting discussion with respect to advice from officials. Remain confidential pursuant to Section 24, advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Counselor Carlson? Carlson, Carlson. Are there any questions about the things you can't talk about? No. Question's been called. All in favor? All right. With that, we are adjourned.